The Plaid of Legions.
To the right of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Move on to our consent agenda. Consider a motion to approve.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Commissioner Gibbon. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. We'll move on to our opportunity for public comment. Anyone who wishes to address the board can come on up. Be limited in time to five minutes per speaker. There's a maximum of 30 minutes available per meeting for the public comment. Anyone want to come up? If not, we'll move on to Commissioner Reports.
No, we got one.
Oh.
Scott Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota.
Good morning.
I'd like to talk about last week's meeting, and we spent four hours in here talking about all sorts of things. Then we got to the integrity of the elections, and Commissioner Aaron's addressed this people here and was belittled, and I took the bait, and I reacted, and I want to apologize for that. I owe each and everyone that was in this room an apology. But I'd like to see our election integrity at the top of the list, not at the bottom. And we spent hours talking about a cattle confinement. We won't take five minutes to talk about election integrity. Something's wrong with this situation. You know, you guys are our leaders, and I would expect better, and I certainly expect better myself. I hope you accept my apologies.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come up? If not, we'll move on to Commissioner Reports. Any Commissioners have a report they'd like to make? If not, we'll move on to our regular business. We have a public hearing to consider an application for a temporary on-sale liquor license.
This is a public hearing to consider the application for a temporary on-sale liquor license to operate outside of a municipality for the Sioux Falls Community Foundation Incorporated to hold a special event on May 5th, 2022, on the property legally described as Track 1 Foster Edition, East Half, Southwest Quarter, 21150, Lincoln County, South Dakota. Location address is 47238-271st Street. And I believe Mary Kolsrud is present to speak on behalf of the application.
Good morning, Commissioner Mary Kolsrud with the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation. We host an annual fundraiser this year. It will be at Landscape Garden Center. So again, this is a private event, ticketed only. We will serve liquor malt beverages as well. We have contracted with a Twist, which is a bartending service, so they will be in charge of IDing, making sure everyone's 21. Obviously, alcohol cannot leave the premise, and again, it's a private ticketed event. So any questions are welcome.
Anybody have any questions for Mary? Thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
Anybody here to speak in favor of the application? Come on up. Anybody here to speak against the application? If not, I consider a motion.
Move for approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Move on to Item 2 on our agenda. It's a public hearing.
This is a public hearing for the purpose of consideration of the petition to vacate the following described highway: Oak Ridge Road, Cedar Circle, and Riverview Road.
Sherry, are you going to speak to that, or?
Mr. Tobin.
Okay.
Good morning. Sorry, just state your name and address, please.
Good morning. A.J. Swanson. My business address is 27452-482nd Avenue, Canton 57013. I'm an attorney, and privileged to represent the applicant Oak Ridge Estate LLC in this effort to vacate three roads or streets that exist by virtue of a 1979 plat, but which, other than some dirt scratching that was done to support a single-family home on this property that was destroyed by fire many, many years ago and has since been obliterated, these roads have never been open for travel. The plat dedication in 1979 was never accepted by any road authority. This extends off a road for 273rd Street, which is a secondary township road, under the auspices of both Springdale and Dayton Townships. I'm also privileged to represent those townships as to this road, and we have already vacated the statutory highways that led into this property. I now represent the sole owner of this property, Oak Ridge Estate. It will be used to support a new single-family home, and part of the home will be sitting on part of this right-of-way, which we hope to vacate. We did file a private driveway easement last week, which does serve each of the lots. We're not expecting to have those lots sold, but yet there will be a driveway easement to each of the lots, and that's basically the story. We hope to move forward with construction on this project, provided the road is vacated. Are there any questions?
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions for A.J.?
Did you say you had already registered the easement?
Yeah, that was filed in last week. It appears at Book 32 of miscellaneous records, page 5. It was recorded with the registered deeds on April the 8th.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have no further questions.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Swanson? If not, I consider a motion.
This is.
Nope, back up. Anybody here to speak in favor of the application other than Mr. Swanson? All right. If not, anybody here to speak in opposition to the application? All right. Seeing and hearing none, I'd consider a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll move to approve the application in full.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Motion carries. Go ahead and move on to Item 3 on our agenda.
Julie.
Good morning.
So I have some handouts. Would you like them first?
Can you first just state your name and address?
My name is Julie Dykstra, and I work for the South Dakota Department of Health, and I am the Southeast Regional Manager. And then with me today, I also have Paula Mazurik, who is my nurse team lead for the Southeast Region as well. And we have some data to present for community health and WIC services in your community.
Sure.
And my address, I have an office in Mitchell, so 1420 North Main in Mitchell.
Thank you.
And my home is in Lennox. I live on 1012 South Garfield.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, as working for the Department of Health, the first slide shows you the regions that the state is divided into, and I cover the green area in the bottom corner, the southeast corner. And so recently, we've had some resignations in our area. So one was in Yankton, and the Yankton office is covering Union County as well. And then we've also had a resignation in our Sioux Falls office. So as I'm looking to fill those positions, we start looking at the data within the counties and how we are covering them, and if there's anything that we can do to improve that coverage. So when we go to the second slide, the third slide that talks about the current WIC coverage. So currently, our program WIC is a program for women, infants, and children, and it's a federally funded program through the Department of Agriculture, and then they partner with the Department of Health to implement that program. And so right now, what this is showing is at 11% is our coverage rate or participation rate of WIC participants compared to what the potential is in your community. So when we go, so right now, it shows it's at 11%. And so what we'd like to do is try to increase that to at least get to 50% coverage for you. So when we look at page, the next slide, for the WIC monthly participation, so the 11% is actually based on the participation rate in your county in the office that we have here, which is Canton. So the average caseload right now for Canton is at about 70. And when we look at the potential eligible, we have 755 eligible for the WIC program. And so what we are looking at doing is trying to increase the hours. So right now, we are serving your county one day a week, and I think with that, there is some limitations for the participants where they may not feel like they have the ability to come to the office. So either they don't come, or they're traveling elsewhere with, outside your county to get services. So the 2021 potential eligible applicants just shows that you have 755 that are eligible for the program. I also included the WIC retailer and WIC dollars spent slide. So that shows of the WIC participants in your county, they are redeeming right now $224,000 at the retailers in your community. And Lincoln County has available accepting WIC as Fairway &amp; Tea, or Harrisburg Sunshine Foods in both Canton and Lennox. And they've added a Fairway &amp; Tea, and then there's also the Hy-Vee Fresh and Harrisburg &amp; Tea. And then we also have a Walmart on South Minnesota and 85th Street. We compiled some Lincoln County data for you, and this just shows median age. So it looks, you know, we've got some families in here that would have children from them from that age of birth to five. And then we looked at the poverty rate, the median income, and the unemployment rate for your community. And then along with the WIC program, we also have some maternal child health services that we also provide, and that would be oral health assessments. We do fluoride applications, immunizations. We do pregnancy care with the moms, postpartum services, breastfeeding support. We do depression screenings, infant and child developmental screens. So they find that if we screen the children sooner, the sooner that we get them in for assistance and support, the better the outcome is and the better they do in school. We do safe sleep education, and then we also issue pack and place for a safe sleep environment, community partnerships, and then we also do referrals to other services for car seats, the quit line, family planning, and then of course with Medicaid, TANF, and SNAP, which in the office here, that's kind of a combined office because all services are located within there. So with the data that we've compiled and looking at your caseload, you know, the 755 is the potential that we could reach. And so with that, we are looking at increasing our service time in your community to three days a week instead of the current one day a week. And so with that, Janet Hankey is your clerical, and she is currently working one day a week. So that's what we were coming to propose, if you would be interested in increasing clerical time here to three days a week. We provide the nurse, and the county usually provides the space and clerical support for us. When we were looking at like a mileage map that was on the back of the travel calculations, we're also looking at, you know, where are these people going if they're not coming to Canton, or if they're not going to Sioux Falls? And so some are going to Viberg, some are going to Vermillion, some are going down to Elk Point. And so we're also looking at placing an office in the El Cester Beersford area as well, so that we can try to reach some of them people to let them know that, you know, we'll be available to help serve them. So our request today with the data that we have would be, you know, providing services three days a week with clerical support offered.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Dykstra?
Julie, before we go into the increasing, 11% looks exceedingly low in comparison to all the counties that you have listed around us.
Yeah.
So is the only reason why that is so low is because of our availability, or are there other extenuating situations that we should be aware of?
Okay, so that's kind of the unknown at this point. I mean, so when I look at, when you look at this WIC monthly participation page, so this shows that you are seeing 71 in the Canton office, but it also shows that 323 participants in your county are seeking services elsewhere. So when we look at them seeking services elsewhere, they could be spending their dollars in another community as well, where they could be, if they were served here, would probably return, you know, and shop at your local stores, which is then more revenue back into your community for shopping. I have visited with the staff here, so your nurse that comes down is Jen Atkinson, and then we have Stacy Scaff as dietitian service, and Janet. And, you know, they said that people do go to Sioux Falls office or go elsewhere because of the limited days, the limited time that we are down here. So I worked in a small community. I am from Aurora County, and so just knowing how people select their services, I do think that they do like a small community, and I think they would come here if we were available more days in the week.
Is our space adequate that we have allocated for these services? Are they adequate at the time, or are they too crowded, or?
No, I feel you have a nice facility, and I feel like you have a nice room. I mean, we've got some offices across the state that are much smaller, and we still serve people. So yes, I feel, so you've got, so you've got an office space for Janet, the clerical. You've got a little toy area, which is nice. And then you've also got a separate nurse and dietitian room. So I think, I think that meets the needs.
Okay. Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Just a question, so I understand Janet works for the system full-time, and she would just be shifting some of her time more to Canton, or is she willing to pick up extra days of work?
Okay, so I did visit with her about that because, you know, she's.
It's kind of an important part of this.
Yes, I know. Everything is just like dependent, like dominoes. One thing with her is she's stepping into the retirement phase of her life.
That was going to be my, you talked about, you know, resignations, and we're expanding services, and how are we going to be able to do that?
Right. So I have visited with her, and she said that, you know, up to two days a week is what she would like to do, but really no more than that. So then we're, you know, we're kind of back at that drawing board of, you know, how are we going to fit that support for three days a week? So.
And did you say you had other resignations in the system, too, that you're still trying to fill?
Okay, so on the state level, not the county level. So I've got a nurse in Sioux Falls that had resigned, and I'm filling her spot. So what I'd like to do, instead of giving all that time to Sioux Falls, I'm going to shift some of that time down here is what I'm planning to do, to help meet this need a little better, and to come to the people rather than having to drive to us.
Other questions?
No, ma'am.
Do you have any idea what kind of impact money would cost? Do you have any idea on that? Because everything we do is predicated on budgets. So you got some estimate or something?
You know, when I look at the food package dollar, so we're looking at $100, $150 a month for the food package, whether that be the infant, the child, or the pregnant woman. And so when we look at that benefit to the family, and if we get them referred to Medicaid, what that ends up doing is saving, it's preventative care, and it's also saving dollars for food that they now can spend on other things that programs can't help them with, diapers, and car repair, and things such as that. And so the other thing that I think about is how, I mean, if you have a welfare program in your community, if we are advocating for preventative care, getting them in for dental care, keeping them on, you know, with insurance or getting them on, what it's going to do is, in the end, hopefully, reduce that amount on welfare that's coming back to you.
I think for every participant on the WIC program, too, the state reimburses the county back.
Yes.
For a certain amount of that clerical support. So as that number goes up, that support goes up.
So we have a WIC expenditure report that the state has in place with each county for the clerical, the county clerical time. And so that is based on participation. So as that participation would increase, the expense report then pays you back each month per participation rate.
Oh.
And then any training that's involved, that is placed on that expenditure report, and WIC reimburses the county for that, for the clerical time to do that.
Julie.
Yes.
First of all, thank you for the report. So if I'm reading this correctly, 300, it says on the WIC monthly participation slide.
Yes.
323 participants are receiving WIC benefits from an office outside the county.
Yes.
So that means those are Lincoln County citizens, but they go to another county.
Yes.
So for example, if I live at the northern edge of the county, it's probably easier for me to just drive to Sioux Falls, right?
Yeah. So actually, I did not include the map, but we have a map that shows participation rate by zip code. And so you're exactly right. So we have a zip code that's actually Sioux Falls address, but it falls into Lincoln County, which is 57108. And up there, we have 193 people participating. So of the 323 that are going elsewhere, 200 of them are up there. But then we've got these other 100 and some that are still going somewhere else, whether it be Viberg, or they're heading south, or to Vermillion.
Because they may live at the edge of the county, and it's just, you know, it's easier, more convenient to be able to drive to the other county.
Right.
When I look at the numbers here, I see that 71 people are currently using this office here.
Yes.
So does that 71 come out of the 323, or do you add that in, and then you get a total of 394 total participants?
So 398 are participating in your county.
Okay.
And then 71 are coming here.
Okay.
So what we'd like to do is increase our time here to hopefully increase participation in this community.
So in terms of the 755 people that are eligible, who currently have 398, so that'd be about, what, 56% or so?
We have 42% right now.
Forty-two percent.
Participation.
Okay.
And so we're looking to try to increase that to at least 50 or above.
And get them participating.
Here.
Here.
Okay, then get your WIC redemption at the stores back in your communities so that they're not traveling somewhere else.
Early intervention's the key.
Yes.
The sooner you provide that service at an earlier age, you practically increase in what can be done versus starting it at a later age, so.
So I've been in community health for 20 years, and my coworker here has been 34. So we've had many years of working with the program and in the communities, and you're right. I mean, the sooner we can get in there, the better. You know, I came from a community that had a lot of influx of Hispanics, you know, and they have no idea of prevention or care. And so, you know, one thing that I think about is if they weren't coming to me to say, you need to go to the dentist, they waited till they had a toothache and went to the emergency room on a Saturday night with no insurance. Okay, then that ends up falling back on the county. And so those are things that we try to work to do to get those referrals in place, get the preventative care done for a better outcome in the end.
I, too, came from a smaller county. I worked in Bonham County for 34 years, and when I started and, you know, kind of learned about public health, it was like, man, this is the best program. I can't believe more folks aren't using this. And when I started, the caseload in Bonham was about 60, and we don't have near the population you do over there. And I told the managers, I'm going to get this to at least 100. And we actually came very close to 200, because you develop relationships with families, and then it just keeps growing, and it just gets better. And I think the things we do besides WIC, WIC is great. It's kind of the carrot. But I tell you what, the other things that we do besides WIC that help these families, it's really a great part of our job and what we do. But that caseload down there is now at about 130, around that right now. And, you know, we're covering a pretty good percentage of our caseload that, you know, is out there. So we're pretty proud of that.
Madam Chair, if you're ready, I would offer a motion to approve this request.
All right, I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it. Madam Chair.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. And, you know, we will be back to visit with you and give you updates as we work on this. And then we visit with the auditor about hours. I mean, how will we go about that for the county clerical, visiting with Janet, the judge?
I don't, Sherry, what, hours? Discuss with who?
Hours of the office?
Right.
We can get together.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Okay. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move on to Item 4 on our agenda. Board action regarding some DOT easements on Highway 18. Terry?
Good morning. So this morning, I've asked Mark Kirkaby to give you a presentation on the, on some easement and right-of-way access that they would like to for the Highway 18 reconstruction project. So at the end of his presentation, I guess, you know, you can ask questions. They have paperwork all drawn up already for you to sign off on. So I guess at the conclusion of that, I would look for authorization for the chair to execute those easement agreements. So, all right, so I'll let Mark come up, and like I said, he's got some handouts for you, I believe, so.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, I am Mark Kirkaby with the Department of Transportation. Our physical central office is at 700 East Broadway in Pier. And Madam Chair, could I approach and hand out a couple little tiny maps, if I can say?
Absolutely. If you have an extra copy, you can put them up on the screen as well.
And if you don't, you can use mine, and I'll play, watch along there.
Madam Chair, to be honest with you, Terry suggested that, and I told him with my technical abilities, I'd get excited when I could put it in attachment on an email.
All right.
You have one, Terry?
Understood.
Just use, I'll follow along. I can see it on the screen. Thank you.
Beautiful. But Madam Chair, on behalf of the citizens of South Dakota and members of the Commission, the state of South Dakota is seeking to acquire from your real estate holdings at your highway facility at the Lincoln County Highway Shop, 0.28 acres of right-of-way, and an additional 4/10 of an acre of temporary construction easement so we can do this project. Highway 18, a year from right now, we will be constructing this project. It's going to be running from Canton all the way to I-29. Well, there certainly will be a median in there. There's going to be four lanes of bona fide traffic. My conservative estimate, and I'm not an engineer, the only thing they trust me with is this little ruler. I'm leaning towards that forty to fifty million dollar project. A lot of jobs are going to be created out of this as well. But we do need this right-of-way, not only from you, but about another fifty-five-ish property owners throughout this project, so we can actually build the road. The other area that, well, excuse me, I should probably do that, the temporary easement itself. When I had previous discussions with Terry, and he certainly did his due diligence in identifying specific areas on those, on that real estate holding, that we will not impact current asphalt, current concrete. It's certainly abiding by the safety rules of the existing fueling stations there. So those are clearly identified and approved through the Federal Highway Authority, as well as the South Dakota Department of Transportation. Your current approach on your facilities will remain, I believe it's forty-foot, and that will be rebuilt. We do not have to touch that underground culvert that's underneath your approach right now. And the project itself really does start on that very east end of that, right at your real estate holdings, as we continue to go west to the truck stop. The other area, that temporary easement area, is going to allow us to get in and do that grading and the ditch work to reclaim any disturbed grass areas and make sure that grass is reestablished and growing on that. And that temporary easement, it does disappear one year following the completion of the project. Our experts, and I say that because there's none of my DOT engineers in the staff right now. I do pick on them because I'm not an engineer. They do anticipate this is going to be a one-year project. It's very aggressive schedule. We will do one side of the road at a time, probably shift to the other, depending on the alignment, the configuration of that road. But it will be, on its completion, solid concrete for eight total miles. The additional request, I did that again, the additional request is, we call it a relocation. I'm sure sometime in the past, you granted some local service organizations to plant a little rotary sign, and I think it's a line sign as well, on your property. It's certainly there. But we are asking that to be removed, so that we do not damage that when we're in that area during construction. And with that, we certainly will compensate for that time as well. It can go back exactly where it is. Your existing big sign right there is certainly not going to be disturbed, and that's on our plans as well. I provided Terry a complete set of these road construction plans. Our compensation offer to Lincoln County is the same that we would offer to any impacted property owner. We're valuing that acreage for right-of-way at that twenty thousand dollar impacted rural acreage value and forty-eight hundred dollars per acre for temporary easement. And I do have, I did make a, when I did these documents a few weeks ago and presented them to Terry, I did make a twenty-dollar error on the benefit of the taxpayers of South Dakota, and that's not accurate. I did retype these documents, and I do have both the right-of-way and the temporary easement agreements typed up to ensure that they're accuracy. But with that, Madam Chair, and members of the Commission, that is my short little spiel to present to you for your consideration. And I would stand by for any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions for Mark?
You said this will be a one-year project?
That is correct.
Wasn't it pretty much twenty-three, twenty-four originally?
Yes, if I could, Madam Chair, respond to that question. That one-year construction project, that is when the design, it's intended to have all the surface work done. That following year is when we get back in there and do any grading, maybe do some changing on, possibly some culverts, and making sure that grass grows. But that aggressive schedule, actually, physical hardtop is one year, but it is a two-year construction period. That's a very good clarification.
Thank you, any other questions? If not, I consider a motion.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Sean, you call the roll.
Is this a motion to approve the easements, as well as the relocation of the sign?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome to dish it to the highway, four lane all the way.
Yeah, it will be, if I could just indulge, there certainly will be some growing pains, there's no question. I, my physical residence is in Rapid City. This project has been delayed and pushed, and there's some, there's certainly some issues. Throughout the course of this project, we do have to, we, the taxpayers, do have to acquire five separate properties. I mean, some people, their lives are going to change. But going from a two-lane to a four-lane, there's no question. It's going to hopefully increase commerce, and it's designed for that safety aspect. And, you know, locally, I know that Laura's Lattes and the Carwashes will do well through that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Move on to item five on our agenda, Terry?
For execution?
Yes.
The next item I have is approve and authorize the chair to execute contract with Cram Construction for a twenty-two, twenty twenty-two bridge project. And again, just for, to bring you up to speed, it's for a structure replacing structures forty-two, zero, one, zero, dash, one oh nine, and forty-two, zero, zero, four, dash, one, zero, zero. Both of these are on County Road one oh three, on the west side of Lennox. Again, that first structure I listed, we will be doing a cost share with the city of Lennox. They're good for twenty percent, I believe, up to like a hundred and twenty-five thousand, maybe. We had signed that agreement several months ago. Total contract price is one million dollars, ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-four, and forty-eight cents.
All right, we've heard the request, any questions? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Wendy Spector. Good morning, Wendy.
Good morning. This is just my first quarter report from the 4-H office. I'll update you on our building progress. The building committee has met several times in this quarter and chose a builder to put up the show ring. The foundation released the funds and signed the contract to move ahead with clear rebuilding, and the plan is for materials to be delivered on Thursday, but that'll be depending on the weather, and with construction to begin on Monday. I have visited clubs in Beersford, Lennox, and Canton to talk about different items club members need to do and some new items we have available. Shooting sports practices in the building started January ninth, and they've met every Sunday since then, and their last practice indoors was this past Sunday. They've had two outdoor practices so far. Their state shoot will be the last weekend in April, and we have forty-four entries from twenty-eight members going to the state shoot. We held our first consumer decision-making and horticulture skillathon this year on President's Day, when a lot of schools didn't have classes that day. We had twenty-seven members from Lincoln, Turner, Yankton, and Minnehaha Counties participate. Then we held the second one in Beersford in conjunction with Union County in March, and we had twenty-one members from Lincoln, Union, and Clay come to those. We held a Youth for the Quality Care of Animals training at Four Options in Sioux Falls, Lennox, Beersford, and Canton this quarter. That is something that's required of anybody who's going to show an animal at the county or state fair. So we had forty-two youth attend among those four times, and we have one more opportunity June first in Lennox. We held our Market Beef Way-In at the Hazel Feed Lot in Beersford, March nineteenth, and we hosted a youth AI clinic, March eighteenth, in the Colton and Crooks area. We had aimed for thirty participants, and we had thirty-three come, with more people that still wanted to come to that. So that was very well attended. Chad mentioned a little bit last week how the Raising the Roof fundraiser went, March twenty-sixth. The auctions raised twenty-one thousand, thirty-eight dollars, total with ticket and drink sales, and after expenses was twenty-six thousand, two hundred and three dollars and thirty cents, so. As the 4-H program advisor, I partnered with the Sioux Empire Livestock Show for the last week in January. I completed the Achieving the Extension Mission through Volunteering Training with multiple online meetings and homeworks from January through March. I've had multiple Zoom meetings with the poultry committee, CDM committee, and the Workforce Outcome Team that I serve on with the State 4-H. Recorded a couple of videos for that Workforce Outcome Team with businesses in our county. I attended the South District Networking Day in Mitchell, March twenty-fourth, with other 4-H professionals from our area. And then our Commercial Pesticide Applicator Training that we do in our office, we've had eight testers come in so far this quarter, and we have four more scheduled for April. So, and then you can see our facility usage for January through March was a lot of various club meetings, leaders' meetings, committee meetings, dog practices, horse safety training, skillathons, YQCA, raise the roof, and fruit delivery. And then, so far in this quarter, towns and townships met in our building April fifth. Lennox Sunstrom FFA held their floor culture and poultry contest yesterday in our building. And then CFEL has a meeting this month, and we have a graduation reception planned in May, so. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? If not, thanks, Wendy.
Okay.
I'm impressed by the improvements and participation that you've been able to bring together. Good job.
Okay, and then next on the agenda, we, Chad, Hazel, and Jeremy Choles from the foundation are going to address this next item.
Okay, yep, come on up.
Jeremy's got some stuff to hand to you guys, so you can all follow along with what I'm talking about. In, in an effort to
Thank you.
come up with new ideas and ways to bring in some more funds for the Fairgrounds project, I guess we're here to ask about having a tractor pull on the fairgrounds, on the new fairgrounds in Lennox. Foundation's been working extremely hard at bringing in funds, and I think our progress out there kind of shows that. But we all know we can only sell so many pies, and even though we have wonderful businesses in the county that have been supporting this, you can only go ask them for donations so many times. Let me explain how this idea came about. We, some of you may remember, there used to be a tractor pull at the Lincoln County Achievement Days. I don't remember a lot of details about it and why it stopped. I would assume space and cost were probably two of the big ones. I just remember that it stopped the year before, I was old enough to do it, so. Some of the younger 4-Hers, or not younger ones, the older 4-Hers, heard that there used to be one there and asked, well, why don't we do that anymore? Well, we had to say, well, it just kind of went away, and nobody's ever really brought it back. And with that being said, in an effort to somewhat revive some history of Lincoln County Achievement Days in Canton at the new facility in Lennox, we'd like to try and put on a tractor pull this year to bring in some more money. We passed it around the group, and everybody thought it was a decent idea. So we started checking into dates that were available to have it. July third and August seventeenth. And August seventeenth falls during the Turner County Fair, which we figured would not be a good deal for us. Who's going to come over to Lennox when they can go to the Turner County Fair in Parker? So we tentatively snagged the July third spot, so that we had our name on it if we could get this pulled off. And then we were contacted by the Lennox Commercial Club, the group that puts on the Fourth of July celebration in Lennox. And they said that they did not have anything planned for Sunday afternoon, July third, after their morning church service. And that they'd be willing to help us with advertising and promotion, people to help at the gate, and add it to their scheduled events, which for a project like this, for us, was, that was a huge help just with the advertising part and getting it out there that we were going to do it. So with all that being said, we reached the point in the planning where we have to come to you and ask, what are your stipulations about an event like this? And where, and if you have anything that you would like done before we do that. A little bit about the type of tractor pull it's going to be. Essentially, there's three classes. Stock, which is out of the field, just how it sounds. There's a thirteen mile an hour class where the tractors have had a little bit of performance work, maybe some different tires or something. And then open farm. And those tractors go a little faster, but they're, they have very strict rules and safety equipment. Some of you may have been to the tractor pull in Beersford, or Ellisister, Wakanda, and that's the type of tractor pull it'll be. Nothing like what they have in Rock Valley or at the Sioux Empire Fair with the tractors that make thousands of horsepower and forty miles an hour. That's not what it is at all. We did decide to put a little bit of a twist on this to revive what we, what used to happen at Canton. And we're going to offer, we found some sponsors that will pay the entry fee for any active FFA or 4-H member, so that those younger kids don't have to pay to do this. That'll all be taken care of. As far as the rest of the entry fees, it's going to be what's called a bragging rights tractor pull. There's no payback, because obviously, all of the proceeds are going to go towards construction of the new fairgrounds. I think, oh, the 4-H and FFA members will also, to save time, they will pull with the adults, but they're pulling against each other at the same time. So there will be an FFA, or 4-H and FFA class winner, but they pulled in the same class as the adults. They may beat the adults and get a trophy for that too, but. So we get to the point where the handout that Jeremy gave you, this is kind of our safety outline and a little bit of the plan of what we're planning on doing. For this year, since the alfalfa field is under lease and things for another year yet, we'd like to do it on the west side of the fairgrounds, on that, essentially, it was the dirt road that Goleman's went out to where they had their little shooting range. Just on the east side of the berm there, kind of off on the side, out of the way. Construction on the building should be done by then, and hopefully with the horse arena, that should all be taken care of as well. This is just kind of our basic safety plan. As we, when we blade the area for the track, the dirt that gets rolled off to the side will be in a berm on each side, roughly eighteen, twenty-four inches tall. Behind that, there will be a ten-foot barrier with a rope that no one is allowed, between that rope and the dirt barrier, to put their lawn chairs, and they all have to be behind that. The entrances and exits to the track, where the pullers come in and leave, will all be roped off, so that nobody's standing or in, for lack of a better term, in the line of fire where they don't need to be. Traffic and parking, since it is a holiday weekend, and that is a state highway, we thought it would be best if people entered on the north end of the fairgrounds, north of the current building right now. That takes them off of the highway when they come in to pay their entrance fee, which would be right by the north side of the building now, then they park in the parking lot. The current main gate would be exit only. The current main gate would be exit only. The participants and tractor pullers will enter at the south gate along the alfalfa field, and tractors and trailers will be on the fairgrounds itself. Um, safety and the rules, that's another attachment that Jeremy gave you that basically gives breakdowns for the classes and, and, uh, safety equipment that pullers have to have and things like that. We will have a, a liability waiver that, um,
Did you, was that in that?
Yeah. And that's in there, too, but, um, state's attorney needs to look over that and make sure it's all the way, the, what he would like to see in it as far as taking liability away. That, that is for all of the pullers to sign when they, when they register. Um, we also will be carrying a general liability insurance in occurrence form policy, and the, the foundation will, will carry this, um, with limits not less than one million dollars per occurrence and two million dollars in aggregate. Um, yeah, and that will be carried by the foundation. That's our plan. And with that, I guess, uh, with the stipulation of the liability waiver and stuff being figured out, we're hoping to get the, the commission's blessing on this.
What time were you gonna have?
Uh, I believe it's at one o'clock. Hoping to be done with it before we need lights.
Uh, Yeah, I just wanna ask a question on Bill. Would you guys wanna look at the liability policy before we took formal action on this? Or are you okay with us giving our blessing and then it?
I think there may be some additional questions and some, I would like to see the liability policy and the insurance, especially if we're going to talk about individual number eighteen. I just wanna make sure that the insurance policy is covered.
So,
Right.
The insurance policy will come from Jensen Insurance in Beersford. That, that's the policy that they use for Al Sister, Beersford, Wakanda, and I think Granite. So, this was not the first time that this had been put in front of them of what was, you know, this, as far as what the city of Beersford and the Al Sister, the Union, Union County Commissioners and the Al Sister Fair required. Um, the liability waiver was something new that Al Sister brought on last year. And that's where the waiver came from, was from their, their fair commission.
They allow, uh, kids under eighteen to participate?
They have, it has, they have to have a, a signed permission slip from their parents. The parents have to be there to sign it, so.
Do you want us to take ac, I mean, if we take action on this today, or do you wanna look at it further?
I believe we can take action on it today if there are some issues that we can't resolve or some, I assume I'm gonna look at the insurance policy. They've done it before. It's gonna be exactly what we need.
Sure.
The other details we can hammer out. We've worked well together. I don't think we've had any, uh, problems so far. If there is, we know the time that they do the tractor pull, we can come back and discuss.
All right.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
I would move for approval. The only concern I have is that if Commissioner Gibbons gets in there and myself, that you don't give him a higher handicap. You know, I'm a bit worried about that.
Well, I'll be driving red, so I know.
That's why you probably need it. But I would move for approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it, but I do have one question.
Go ahead.
If you have, uh, thi, this is part of the, the Fourth of July, old-fashioned whatever, Lennox each year. I know they do have a community worship service, which I don't know what the time is. You know, some of those workers might be involved with that until it's over, so I don't know if your ten o'clock registration would work or not, but I guess you have to coordinate that with them.
We will, if, if that would be the case, that they're doing something with the worship service, we will absolutely work around that, so.
Madam Chair?
All right, yes, Commissioner Poppins.
I'm excited about this. Uh, my family had the opportunity a few years ago to allow a use of land for a tractor pull in the, uh, an area by T. Um, that unfortunately couldn't, for several reasons, continue. The question I have is longevity of this. Yeah, I think in the document, it talked about replacing it back. Is that because the site is not your permanent location request, or?
Right, along, um, that and where the dirt berm that we'll put back, essentially because it's be, it's a, an area that's gonna get used for other things. Um, we're hoping that when, how do I put this? So our, our use of the facility has been pretty aggressive compared to what the lease was written for the alfalfa. Um, we were not planning on being able to have events in the summertime and stuff out there yet. So, once the lease is changed for the alfalfa, we'd like to ma- maybe move it out there permanently and possibly guardrail and some better, better facility features. But for the first year, this is
This is okay?
Yep.
Tractor pullers sometimes have a pretty particular about how that track looks, so.
Yeah, they, they are.
You know, there's one other project that I think you should explore, and that is the advent of a antique or classic car show sometime in August, because there is one at the Fourth of July when they have that. And that grows every year, but if you look at the numbers that some of these, uh, other communities, the number of people that are attracted, I mean, it's, it's, it's a very, you know, low-budget situation. They get to come and put their hoods up and show off their vehicles, you know, so. That's something maybe in August or September.
Uh, again, another example of, uh, why it was important to acquire property allowed expansion. A current site is limited by size. Um, it's fortuitous to have a, a location like this uh, that can expand and create more opportunities for the young people as well as the communities to participate. And I, I applaud you for not just asking for a handout. You're gonna actually provide a service or an event that people can enjoy and come to and still support, uh, the founded, the 4-H Foundation and their activities, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, guys.
All right.
We have a motion and a second on the table?
Uh, yep, go ahead and call it.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to item eight on our agenda. Good morning, Sheriff.
I'm just requesting approval and authoriz-it, to authorize the chair to execute joint powers agreement with the South Dakota Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. Uh, we've received equipment, uh, computer equipment, uh, stuff to download digital evidence, and this will allow us to investigate crimes against children on the internet, which unfortunately is a growing problem, and Lincoln County's not immune to it. So we were asked by the DCI to, uh, participate in this program. I think it's a good program. They've, they've supplied all the equipment and will supply all the training. And then our officers will be responsible for the, getting the training and using the equipment.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Jeremy, call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carla, you're next.
Good morning. Good morning. Carla Gosin, Director of Equalization. There are four abatement applications for review and/or approval from the commission. Um, the first is a request for an abatement for taxes payable twenty-twenty-two submitted by Edward and Marcin Brands for the property legally described as Lot Four C, Block One, Whispering Ridge Edition, parcel number two-eighty-one dot six-seven dot zero-one dot zero-zero-four C in the amount of nine-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and seventeen cents. After review of the application for an abatement, that is my responsibility in this procedure, um, I have reviewed it based on South Dakota Codified Law ten-dash-eighteen-dash-one subsection one, which is an error or a, um, error in the description of the property or the valuation of the property thereof. Um, in accordance to some opinions that are out there, um, that are dealing with abatements and requests, um, specifically opinion ninety-four dash sixteen, seventy-nine dash fourteen. There's a May nineteen-forty-nine opinion and an August twenty-twenty-one opinion out there. They're quite old, but they're still relevant to, um, my recommendation. Um, it must be a clerical error or an incorrect legal description, which causes an over-evaluation, um, specifically in the May nineteen-forty-nine, um, opinion, which states, uh, there were some involvements of personal property, which two Hogs were assessed with a value of five-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty dollars, um, put in place by the county Director of Equalization, but it was supposed to be, be clearly fifty-two dollars and thirty cents. That is a probable cause for an abatement and not the, um, not the requested abatement that is set forth by the property owners described. It's more, uh, it's what they're trying to replace the abatement application with the equalization process. Meaning this property was assessed at a value in which we placed upon it for the twenty-one assessment year taxes payable in twenty-twenty-two. Um, the valuation that we placed upon it was not in error. Um, it, we came up with a value and we placed that value on the assessment roll. I see in the eyes of the abatement request how one would deem this as an error. Whether we do an assessment by hand back in nineteen-forty-nine, nineteen-twenty-one, and even in as late as nineteen-ninety-four, or we do it, place an assessment by hand or by computer, it's essentially the same thing, um, in my eyes. Now, this is my recommendation to the board. You guys have the final approval of the abatement process. This is a multi-unit property, um, which have been split into their own individual parcel. Um, I believe it's a five-plex, maybe a four-plex. I'm not, I ca, I can't remember, to be honest with you. Um, this particular unit was assessed differently than the other units. Um, what I mean by that is we have put in place market adjustments for one-story homes, two-story homes, townhomes, twin homes, single-family homes, um, many, many different type of market adjustments, um, with our assessment process. This particular unit was assessed, um, in our category as a single-family dwelling instead of a townhome, um, which caused a different valuation. There's a lot going on with this property, I understand. I'm trying to give you as many, as much information as I can during this. Sure, it looks like it's, uh, there's four townhomes in that particular building. Um, so you're asking us to approve? My recommendation is for denial.
Is for denial. So the assessment, there's nothing wrong with the assessment itself?
The assessment that was placed on it in twenty-twenty-one was the assessment that, um, we came up with. Um, at, it is assessed in equ, you know, in, um, not equitable to the other units. Which by many opinions out there, the ones that I stated, ninety-four, sixteen, seventy-nine, fourteen, you know, that the abatement process is not put in place to oversee the assessment process or the appeal process of one's property. Meaning you don't wait until you get your tax statement to review your assessment. This could have been caught when we sent out the twenty-twenty-one assessment last year. Again, this is your final, um, review. You make the final approval or denial. Um, this does go to the city for another look at the abatement application after the commission reviews it.
Anybody have any questions for Carla? If not, is there a motion?
I'm assuming the applicant isn't here or the, to speak.
I'm not sure if they're in the, I'm not sure if they're in the room. Boing. Talked to her on the phone.
So it's more of a process problem than anything, wrong process?
Has it been rectified now?
Has it been?
Has it?
Yes, it has.
What, what do you wanna do, guys?
I'll give you a motion to affirm, but I'm going to vote against that motion.
I have a motion to approve the abatement application. Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the abatement application. Any further discussion?
I think you probably explained this, Carla, but I wanna make sure I understand this. So I'm looking at their application filed by, um, it looks like it was filed by Mrs. Brands.
Correct.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Ehrens, I can't hear you. What, what did you say, sir?
So I'm looking at the, uh, application for abatement. It was signed by Mrs. Brands, and it says she checks the box other. And then she makes the following comment, "This four-plex townhome was assessed as a single-felling, single-family dwelling as certified below." And then I think she notes that her husband passed away back in twenty-twenty. What, uh, I, I mean, is that what you're, is that essentially what she's trying to argue here? Is that, um, because it was assessed as a single-family home, even though in reality, well, I don't know if this is the case, but she's asserting that it's a four-plex townhome? That for some reason it should be taxed in a different manner?
I think one gets confused with our, our adjustment language versus, you know, how it is assessed by law. A single-family home is described by law as, um, a lot, an acre, um, for which the lot is, and a dwelling that is individually, um, parceled out. That's the true definition of a single-family home. And I think, um, Ms. Brands, um, was somewhat, I don't know if I don't, I wanna say confused, but she got confused with our assessment language versus, you know, the, the actual definition of a single-family home. Because like I described, um, earlier is when we do make adjustments on properties because of market valuations, we don't just put a flat rate of, you know, a five percent increase for all. Um, we try to narrow it down. Is it a, is it, is it our single-family homes, which we call, I guess, you know, it's not a townhome, it's not a twin home, it's not a commercial property, it's not a condo, it's not a two-story. You know, we individually describe that in our assessment practice. So I think that's where the term "single-family dwelling" came in her application. Um, 'cause I, I did personally speak with Mrs. Cause I, I did personally speak with Mrs. Brands and I, I did explain and how her valuation was assessed differently than her other units that were right next door to her. Is that an error? Some could think that be an error, but the error according to an abatement process is more of a clerical error, where we transposed the number. Just like I gave you the information, you know, the five thousand two hundred and thirty dollars instead of the fifty-two dollars and thirty cents. So the error in which for an abatement is the clerical type errors. And, and it's the, the the error that she feels that happened is more, should be dealt on as a equalization process instead of the abatement process. You should be looking at it before you get your tax notice.
Would there be any change in the assessed value?
Yes.
Let me restate that. So if it was called a four-plex townhome, would it have a different assessed value as opposed to a single-family home?
Pardon? Say that again?
So if it was considered a four-plex townhome, would it have a different assessed value as opposed to if it's called a single-family home? Does, does that nomenclature change the assessed valuation?
Yes.
It does.
Yes, because of the, the market differentiates between homes that are connected to another versus standalone homes. So we make that adjustment on the assessment side.
And so is this a single-family home or is this a four-plex townhome?
This is a four-plex townhome.
Okay, and so it should be assessed as a four-plex townhome?
Yes.
Okay, and so if it's assessed as a four-plex townhome, we have to deny, under that logic, we have to deny her abatement then, or we have to approve it?
Did you?
I did vet this with Bill.
Did you make, yeah, did you make the adjustment?
Yes.
On the valuation?
Yes. Payable twenty-two.
Twenty-two, but not payable twenty-one?
Correct, because it was just brought to us in, I believe, February of this year.
Okay.
And this will, we have the twenty-twenty-two, pay twenty-three. This would correct
She's seeking relief for this year. Is her application for abatement for this year timely?
Is it?
Is it timely?
Yes.
Is she allowed, you know, she didn't miss any deadline by making an application?
No, she did not.
Okay. Thank you.
Not for abatement.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
No.
Commissioner Landine?
I'm going to say no, and simply because if everybody wanted to come back and do it this way, we'd be setting not a good precedent. Anyway, it's fixed going forward. All right.
The next abatement is to abate taxes for twenty-twenty-one payable twenty-twenty-two on a property in Grant Township in the amount of one thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty cents to, due to a veteran's exemption. Most of this information is confidential, that's why, why very little information is out here. But they, they met the criteria, they, they met the, they just did not meet the deadline. And so in accordance to ten eighteen dash two subsection, I'm not sure on the subsection right now, but you have the authority, you, you may abate these type of requests.
And when you say they did not meet the deadline, what was the deadline?
So the deadline is November one of each year, so they have to they have to be permanently and totally disabled and then have their application into the equalization office by November one.
And when did you get it?
I do not have the application in front of me that.
This person is one hundred percent disabled?
Yes.
Because of their service to the military?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I move for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? I see the date on the application is March fourth of this year. Any further discussion? If not, you call the roll, please.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
I'm staying.
Commissioner Poppins?
Because I will grant any request that a veteran asks, even if it's late, yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Absolutely, yes.
Commissioner Landine?
I want to vote yes, but I'm going to vote no, because it's the same thing as the former, it's the process and those dates are set.
If I may clarify, you do have the authority to abate these type of requests. This meets.
Okay, so the deadline is not?
Right, so it states, and I'm sorry, I do not have the law in front of me, but it states that if they have qualified but missed the deadline, the county commission has, may abate the taxes.
All right, then I will vote yes. So, while she carries. Next one, Carla?
Our next abatement is to approve the abatement of the real estate taxes payable in twenty-twenty-two in the amount of seventy-three dollars and seventy-six submitted by JFF Land LLC for parcel number one hundred dot four nine dot zero nine dot four thousand. The city purchased ten point four one acres in June of twenty-twenty-one, therefore exempting that portion of their tax bill.
Move to approve, they didn't have it, so they shouldn't have got it. So I move to approve.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
The next abatement is to approve the abatement of real estate taxes payable in twenty-twenty-two in the amount of fifty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents submitted by the city of Gearsford for parcel number two six zero dot ten dot zero two dot zero zero nine. The property is exempt from tax. Therefore, the assessor's recommendation is to approve it.
Move to approve.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead.
All right, any further discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Thank you.
I consider a motion to convene as the twenty-twenty-two consolidated board?
If we could have a motion to recess, then a motion to convene, then, okay.
Yep, if you want to do it that way, that's fine. Motion to recess?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Sean.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Now a motion to convene as the twenty-twenty-two consolidated Board of Equalization?
Move to convene.
Second.
Thank you, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
And then can we recess as consolidated and reconvene as Lincoln County?
Move to recess.
Don't we have to?
We do not have any consolidated.
Thank you.
We have regular county Board of Equalization.
Thank you, Sean.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that. Now I need another motion, a motion to convene back to Lincoln County.
Who was motion for recess as consolidated?
That was mine.
Good, thank you. And the second?
Mine, yeah.
Thank you.
So recessed, tell tale to correct.
Thank you.
What do you need now, Sean?
I think Commissioner Poppins' motion to convene it as a, oh, did we have a motion to convene as county?
I had a motion to recess.
Okay.
You need a motion to convene.
We need to vote on that. We need to vote on the recess, then we have to convene.
Yes. Any other second on the recess?
Commissioner Schmidt?
All right, we call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Now we need a motion to reconvene as county commission.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
We took about three minutes to do nothing there.
Exactly what I thought. All right.
Well, we do have some administrative type changes that we can, did we?
Recession now or not?
Now we're back. Our agenda for Board of Equalization doesn't start at ten AM.
We can start the Board of Equalization.
Okay.
There. Starting our Board of Equalization, meaning. So would any, everyone, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
We already did that.
I know, that's why I'm like, why do I have two of these?
We didn't take the, we didn't take the pledge of allegiance off there. I don't think that we necessarily would have to.
All right, so we've got a consent agenda on our Board of Equalization agenda.
We do need to convene as the county Board of Equalization.
It's confusing, but it's, it's actually that we have to do it.
I'll move to convene as county Board of Equalization.
I swear that's what we did before, but I'll second that.
No, it was consolidated.
Thank you, but that's how lovely this is. You have a motion and a second, Sean.
Thank you, call the roll, Sean.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
I think we just took another three minutes.
Now can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda on our Board of Equalization agenda?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes, our first Board of Equalization hearing is scheduled for ten o'clock, so we'll take a break until ten o'clock, I guess.
I did on the letter state that, can we start early? We cannot start early.
So we'll take a break until ten o'clock.
Coffee. Yeah, three, you're ready to go?
So we have our ten o'clock appeal. Go ahead. Do we have, do we, people are calling in? Okay. And they're giving me a thumbs up, so go ahead.
Our first appeal is Gordon and Angela Barrow. They're located at eight oh five Maya Street, Harrisburg, South Dakota. Parcel number two seven zero dot seven four dot.
Twelve dot zero zero three. It's a appeal in regards to the classification of their property, specifically the owner occupied status. You can see in our first slide, the Barrows purchased the property in August of twenty-twenty-one. On the second page, I have a note that says the property was previously classed as owner occupied at the time of purchase. So had the Barrows filled out their certificate of real estate value in that bottom yellow section, it would have continued the owner occupied classification, but they did not fill out the application at the time of transfer. We sent two notices to the Barrows during the, between November first twenty-twenty-one and January fifteenth about twenty-twenty-two for the owner occupied classification to apply. Once they did not apply within the timeline we thought was considered for making the determination of the owner occupied classification prior to assessments going out, we sent a notice of review of owner occupied to the Barrows in nine, to nine of twenty-two that the property has transferred to to a new owner and there's no owner occupied certificate on file. And that was sent February ninth, twenty-twenty-two. You'll also see on their assessment notice, it was stating it was not owner occupied. In yellow, it says the residential and commercial equals non-owner occupied. You can see in the second yellow, we have it as residential, refer back to the top. But it also states within the assessment notice itself is to, you know, pay attention, there's no occupied classification that's going to give you a tax benefit and that's highlighted in that bottom yellow. So there's, there's the fourth notification. By law, you have to own it and occupy it as of November one of the preceding year and have the owner occupied certificate sent back to our office by March fifteen. And the application for owner occupied was not received in the Lincoln County Director of Equalization Office.
Thank you, is the applicant present?
Yes. It's Pam.
Sir, can you state your name and address, please?
Yes, ma'am, my name is Gordon Tanisero at eight zero four Maya Street, Harrisburg, five seven zero three two.
What would you like us to know about your appeal?
Well, I will say that we obviously didn't get the first two notifications. The reason why, I don't know. But we didn't get any kind of, yeah, any kind of notification. And I would say our, our biggest appeal that we'd be making is I feel like our Realtor kind of let us down on, we, this is, this is technically, it's technically not our first home. Like we, we owned the condo before, but this is our first house. And we didn't get the proper walkthrough on how, how to fill out any of this paperwork. And I think the only notice that we really got was from our mortgage loan officer and that was in March or something. And, yeah, we got, we got a notification, but we weren't really sure what it was or what it was about. And we thought it was important, so what we decided to do is just, is just to take care of that when we did our taxes. We, we thought it was something that had to do with our taxes. And so that when we get to our, we did our taxes on March twenty-first, that's when we found out that this was a big big mistake, big uh-oh, you know. So again, I, I've been, I've just been told that this was something that our Realtor really helped walk through and just kind of reminds us and shows us how, you know, all the forms. Unfortunately, we did not have that with our Realtor. And the notice of bail we didn't get.
Got the one that was dated two nineteen, and that's the one we took to the CPA and she told us that a CPA
Ma'am, ma'am, I'm sorry, I, Gordon's speaking, if you'd like to be recognized, can you just state your name, please, on the record before you speak?
Yeah, I'm his wife, my name's Angela Barrow.
Okay, and what did you want us to know, Angela?
We got that letter that's dated two nineteen that says we need to send him the letter, or, yeah, a letter to appeal.
Uh, we got that letter that's dated 2/19 that says we need to send in the letter, or, yeah, a letter to appeal. And that's the one we took to our CPA, and she's the one that told us that our Realtor usually takes care of that. And that's when we found out that it wasn't taken care of. So we weren't even aware of what it was or that we had to do anything because everyone we spoke with, our loan officer also told us that usually our, the Realtor takes care of that for us as well.
Thank you, does the board have any questions for either Carla or the Barrows?
What was the date that they actually did submit on the application? For owner occupied? Or what date did you receive it?
What was the date?
What was the date we received it?
That question for our staff, thank you.
Oh, sorry.
I do not have an application on file as of today.
Still don't have an application? Oh. Mr. Mercer Barrow, did you hear that there's no application yet as of date, to date for owner occupied?
Yep, and I tried to, and by the time I tried, it was already, like, the link would not work. A lady at the courthouse was trying to walk me through it, she told me the website. We were all over the phone talking about it, and then she said, you're going to just have to come in and submit a letter of appeal. And so that's what I did.
But we, we don't have one for next year even.
Is that something we can already do right now?
You can do that, yes.
We don't have to wait for November 1st to do it?
No.
No, you should not wait until November 1st.
Okay.
I guess that, guys, this is our, with all due respect, this is our, this is our first rodeo, and again, our Realtor did not, has, we've had no communication with them as far as how any of this is supposed to go. So all the information we're getting via email or we're, we're contacting clerk of courts and just the communication is, uh, it's just foreign to us, you know, we're not really sure what to do. So just, it, whatever the process is, if you walk us through it, we're willing to do whatever we need to do to make it right.
All right, we've heard the request and we've heard the reasoning for the not being owner occupied filed. What action does the board want to take?
I'll, I'll offer a motion to, uh, to approve the owner occupied status, and I will not be supporting the motion, though.
I've got a motion to, to award the owner occupied status, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to award the status, any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
No.
Commissioner Landine?
No.
So get, get your paperwork in, so that, that doesn't happen again.
Oh, okay, absolutely, thank you so much.
Yep, I'm sorry that you, maybe you're a Realtor or the closing company didn't explain that very well to you.
If I could, before they hang up, would you call the Sioux Empire Housing Partnership? And they will walk you through the entire process and make sure that you have it correct and on time. And you can look that number up, that's 605-339-0942.
Okay, one, one second, sir, I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna write this down.
It's called the Sioux Empire Housing Partnership.
Sioux, Sioux Empire Housing-
Housing Partnership, yeah. And it wouldn't be, uh, wouldn't be adverse or, I used to run this place, to take the course for home buyers, for the first time home buyers, and you will have kind of a complete understanding of all the responsibilities you have when you purchase a home. But I would call them and they will help you walk through the entire process.
All right, thank you, we're going to move on to our next appeal.
Our next appeal is the classification for owner occupied status. It's under the name of Brianna and Austin Whitley, parcel number 240 dot 93 dot 08 dot 005. You can see on the information that I provided, that they purchased the property November 5th, 2021, so after the deadline. It was a new construction property. An owner occupied certificate was filed within the Lincoln County Equalization Office. Property owners stated on there they did not own it November 1st of 2021, nor did they occupy it November 1st of 2021. We sent a review in February of 15, 2022, that they did not own it or occupy it as of November 2021. Per law, you have to own it and occupy it and submit the application to the Equalization Office by March 15 of the, of the next year. So therefore, the assessor's office recommends no change, meaning they do not qualify for the owner occupied status.
All right, and is the appellant here? All right. Is there someone with us on the phone for this hearing?
Yep, yep, I'm here.
And can you just state your name and address, please?
Yep, Brianna Whitley, 600 North Summit Avenue in T.
All right, and Ms. Whitley, can you just tell us what you'd like us to know about your appeal?
Yeah, I just, um, I've, I guess never dealt with this before, and we were made to, I mean, when we closed on our house, they told us we definitely have to submit for owner occupied status. Like, they made it like a big deal, kind of. So I was just a little surprised when it was denied, and I guess the only question I have is, do, if it's denied, that's fine, do I then have to, like, resubmit my request for next year then? Or, um, how does that all work?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. So is it just because we didn't move in by the 1st and it was on the 5th of November that we can't get owner occupied status? Or is it because it's new construction, or?
Unfortunately, that's correct, because it was after that November 1st deadline.
Okay, all right. Well, that kind of clears everything up, then.
I do have a question for staff.
Yeah, go ahead.
Was this property fully assessed on November 1st, or for the tax year? Or was it still in construction, so it wasn't completely assessed currently?
For the '22 assessment year, it will be fully assessed.
It is fully assessed, it's completed.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for staff or Ms. Whitley? If not, consider a motion.
I'll move to approve it, but again, unfortunately, not going to be able to support it due to the fact she didn't own it or occupy it on the November 1st requirement.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
No.
Commissioner Landine?
No.
All right, Ms. Whitley, just get your paperwork filed out, filled out and sent in to get that changed.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't quite understand, what do I? What do I have to fill out?
Go ahead.
Ms. Whitley, if you would submit your owner occupied status for the '23 assessment year prior to March 15th, 2023. It should be available, you can call our office, we can send you a form. I believe the state website will be available sometime late summer, early spring of this year.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you so much for your time.
Congratulations on your new home, though.
Thank you.
Do we have the other person on the line, so we can start?
Yeah, well, we still can't start.
If they're on the line, I think we can, can-
Our next appeal is Joshua and Jenna Fisher loca-
Do we have Fishers on the phone?
We're three minutes early, so are they on?
They're on.
Hello?
Hi.
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 Is this Jenna?
Yes, it is.
Okay, Jenna. We're gonna go ahead and the auditor's gonna speak about your request, and then you'll get a chance when she's done, okay?
Okay, thank you so much.
You said auditor.
Or, excuse me, Director of Equalization, not the auditor.
Okay.
Our next appeal is Joshua and Jenna Fisher located at 909 South Harrison Street in Lenox, South Dakota. Parcel number 250 dot 85 dot 03 dot 008. The appeal is for the owner occupied classification. The homeowners did own the property November 1, 2021. I believe they purchased it in May of 2021.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm on the wrong one, I apologize. Excuse me, I am pulling up your property as-
No, that's the correct property.
There was a transfer of ownership on this property at the Lincoln County Treasurer's Office. It is a mobile home located in Lenox. The paperwork was filed appropriately. We did send two assessment, or, excuse me, two owner occupied certificates to the stated address, neither, none of which have been returned. We also sent a notice of review to the property owner in February 17th, 2022, that it is under new ownership and no new application for owner occupied status has been submitted to our office. They did receive an assessment notice stating it was not owner occupied, and it's clearly stated by law how the owner occupied properties is a tax benefit. We did receive a notice, or, excuse me, an application for owner occupied status in March, March 22nd, 2022, in which we sent a denial to the property based on that application because it was submitted after the deadline of March 15. Staff recommendation is denial of the owner occupied status.
Ms. Fisher, go ahead and let us know what you'd like us to about your appeal.
Yes, ma'am, um, I am a mother of four, and we just moved to South Dakota. I've never filled out an owner occupied before, so I was going to come down to the county and ask about what the form was. I didn't know what it was, it seemed ignorant, but it was. And, um, when I was going to come down, I was going to do my registration as well to kill two birds with one stone. And unfortunately, I had to go to Texas on the day that I was going to come down because my father had a heart attack. And I'm not asking necessarily for, I filled out an ex, um, a request to do this because I was told to, I didn't realize I, I'm a person who follows rules. I understand I didn't make the deadline, so I'm understanding if the deadline is hard and I am not getting owner occupied status for next year, and I will fill out the paperwork correctly next year.
Anybody have any questions for staff or Ms. Fisher? If not, is there a motion?
I'll offer the motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
No.
Commissioner Landine?
No. Ma'am, thank you for the appeal, and I'm sorry that you didn't know the process, but get that paperwork filled out for this year, and then that shouldn't be a problem the next go around.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next hearing is not scheduled till 10:40, but do we?
10:30.
Or, excuse me, 10:30. Do we have Ms. Brady on the phone? Not yet?
Take a five-minute break, or?
Or is she here? No.
We did not receive an RSVP from the appellant as well.
Then we have to wait till 10:30?
Yep, then we're gonna wait, so we're gonna take a break until 10:30. Is Wanda Brady present? All right, Carla, why don't you just go ahead and explain?
Our next appeal is a property classification appeal for the owner occupied status. Property owned by Wanda Brady at 220 South Ash Street in Lenox, South Dakota. It's parcel 250 dot 33 dot 00 dot 034A. Ms. Brady purchased the property in September of 2020. Again, if the certificate of real estate value had been properly filled out, the property was previously owner occupied. By filling out that form on the certificate of real estate value, she would have continued the owner occupied status. You can see from the form that she did not fill out that portion of the certificate of real estate value. We sent two notices with the owner occupied certificate to the 220 South Ash Street, none of which were returned to our office. Therefore, we sent a review of owner occupied status saying it had transferred to a new owner and no new application for owner occupied status had been submitted to our office. Assessment notice shows that it's a non-owner occupied property. It does describe the owner occupied in the bottom portion of every assessment notice in the state of South Dakota. We did have an application submitted to our office in March 20th of 2020 stating that she was the owner and she occupied it, but she did miss the deadline, which would be the March 15 deadline. Once the application was submitted, another notice was sent to Ms. Brady stating that your application did not meet the March 15 deadline. It stated that we would send her a new application next year, which prompted Ms. Brady to appeal through the Board of Equalization. Assessor's recommendation is to deny the owner occupied status because the appellant missed the March 15, 2022 deadline.
Again, is Wanda Brady present? If not, any discussion or questions for staff?
She did submit a notice to the board. That was, I think that's in your docket as well.
So Carla, just let me ask a question, just for everybody's edification, or at least mine. So if somebody misses the deadline and they've made the request and said they were living there as of, you know, whatever date, that they need to file another application, it doesn't qualify them for the next year?
Yep, we code that into a couple different places to send them a new application because we had to deny this last one, so therefore, that application was denied, so we need a new application that would be approved.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
For future years, can we just create a form that allows them to apply anyway? So we don't have to deny it and make them fill out more paperwork? You know, so they just roll over to the next year instead of having to do multiple applications?
That's, that's what I'm wondering, okay, so it's denied for this year, but why isn't approved for next year at the same time? I mean, is that state statute, are these forms coming from the state?
I don't think it's a state statute, it's- It's more of an office practice because we denied this application. So this application is not
A valid application.
Valid.
Yeah, I understand the logic.
Okay, sure.
Absolutely. I'm just wondering, can we just go the extra step now and add on to their rollover function? So yeah.
Yeah.
You would deny the first part of the application, but then the second part, further down the sheet, would be bound over and processed for the next year.
I would definitely look into that option. Absolutely. It would save another mailing or two.
I totally support that. The scenario will be, though, they may not be occupying it then those dates. If you follow my they may not be occupying on the next round of dates that are required for the document, so.
Yeah, you would just need to put on there, yes or no, are you gonna occupy it or not?
Going to versus does, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll look into some options.
Thank you.
I move to approve.
Second.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Poppins, a second by Commissioner Aaron's. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
No.
Commissioner Landine?
No. Getting dizzy.
The next action that is on the commission docket for county boards of equalization is to approve the continuation of tax exempt status. In your shared folder is a spreadsheet that lists all of the exempt applications that need to have a continuation of exempt application submitted to the equalization office. We will be hearing one new application and I believe seven others that are they're new, they're long for applications, they're new because the percentage of exemption could change each year. So, but the first step is to approve everything that's in the white. There are continuous exemption properties located throughout South Dakota that are required by law to submit a continuation of application. I apologize that this is very small and hard to read. I believe within your assessors, or excuse me, your civic clerk, you can expand and make this a larger PDF. These are properties that are again, they're, they were previously tax exempt. The status of that has not changed. They're still owned by the same corporation or organization, and they're still being used exclusively for that exempt purpose that they had the previous year.
So are the item five, these are all already approved exemptions?
Yes. Just need a formal approval by the commission to grant the continuation of exemption for these properties.
Okay, we've heard the request. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And Carla, if that's something that can be put on the consent agenda next time, maybe that's what we should do?
Yes.
All right, next one.
The next few will be, exemptions will be new or changed exemptions. They are required by law to fill out a long form each year because of their percentage of completion, or excuse me, percentage of exemption. The first, the first exemption that we have in the docket is oops, kind of sideways. It is parcel number two seven zero dot two zero dot zero five dot zero zero six. It's owned by Harrisburg Economic Development. Per statute, they are, they are eligible for tax exemption because they are a they're a local
Nonprofit.
development corporation. By law, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars where for our local development folks are exempted from taxation. Lincoln County has not met that cap of the seven fifty. Therefore, the report of investigation by the Director of Equalization, I have approved or make a recommendation to exempt it for the twenty twenty two assessment year.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Second. Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
That was our one and only new one for this year. Now, the next will be a series of properties that were previously had a portion of their valuation exempt last year, and we just need to confirm that percentage is still valid for the twenty twenty two assessment year.
Any of those one at a time?
I think it'll be easier doing this way. It's a property owned by a Vera McKinnon. It's parcel two eighty two dot zero five dot zero zero one. It's legally described as the Northwest Quarter, excluding lots, lots H one and H two and tract of Prairie View Edition, section sixteen, township one hundred dash fifty. They qualify based on codified law, ten dash four dash nine point three, as a nonprofit healthcare facility. They are with verification stating they are ninety-nine percent exempt from taxation, therefore making them one percent taxable for the twenty twenty two assessment year. And I believe this is the clinic and the hospital. That's what the specific use is of the property.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next one, Carla.
Our next parcel for exemption is also owned by a Vera McKinnon. It's parcel two eight two dot zero five dot zero two dot zero zero three. Lot three, block two, a Vera McKinnon South Edition in Sioux Falls. It's the addiction center, also under South Dakota codified law, ten dash four dash nine point three. It's a nonprofit healthcare facility. Its one hundred percent use is for inpatient outpatient treatments with chemical dependency. The assessor recommendation is saying, is recommending a hundred percent exemption on this property.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a motion by Schmidt, a second by Commissioner Aaron's. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you.
Our next property is also owned by a Vera McKinnon. It's parcel two eight zero dot nine eight dot one one dot zero zero zero. Block eleven, Diamond Valley Edition to the city of Sioux Falls. Under South Dakota codified law, ten dash four dash nine point three, they're eligible for exemption for nonprofit healthcare facility. It is used for hundred percent charitable and religious under the clinics and support services. Therefore, the assessor's office recommendation is to grant the one hundred thou, the one hundred percent tax exemption.
Move for approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next property is also owned by a Vera McKinnon. It is parcel number two eight one dot one nine dot zero zero dot zero zero one. It's lot one, a Vera McKinnon Behavioral Health to the City of Sioux Falls. Addition, under South Dakota codified law, ten dash four dash nine point three, under nonprofit healthcare facility. It is their behavioral health hospital, clinics, and retail pharmacy. That's what's within the structure. They are requesting ninety-nine percent tax exempt, therefore being taxed at a one percent taxable rate. I want the board to understand they do supply documentation on what percentage is of that facility is being rented out, per se, so they do supply that documentation to the equalization office. Therefore, with the proper documentation, I, under the investigation that I'm supposed to do, I am recommending a one percent taxable valuation for this property.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Moved to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gibbon. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
The next property is also owned by a Vera McKinnon. It is parcel number two eight one dot seven four dot zero two dot zero zero two. Lot two, block three, Sioux Falls, Minnesota Crossing Edition. It is an athletic training facility. They are indicating on their form, they fill out these forms every year for us, and they are not requesting any type of exemption on this property, but they do fill out the form, so I have to address it to the board at this time. Under the report of investigation by our office with the help of a Vera McKinnon, I am requesting that this property be one hundred percent taxable.
So moved, Madam Chair. Second.
Thank you. Is there, Sean, go ahead, call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Very similar to the last one. It's owned by a Vera McKinnon, parcel number two eight two dot zero five dot zero two dot zero zero one. Lot one, block two, a Vera McKinnon South Edition, city of Sioux Falls. They are requesting zero percent exemption. Therefore, under the investigation and the recommendation by the Director of Equalization, I'm requesting it to be one hundred percent taxable.
All right, further request?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
This is kind of a twofold application. We originally sent out a continuation of tax exemption, and they filled that particular exemption out, but they also, because it did meet the requirement for a hundred percent to continue to have the exemption, but they also filled out the full application. So that's why I mean addressing it at this time. This was the last application that we received in this office. It is owned by chapter two eighty-nine of the Experimental Aircraft Association, parcel number one hundred dot fifty dot eighty dot zero zero three zero. It's lease site Q in Sky Haven. Section thirty, one hundred fifty, which is Delapre Township. They are exempt before the benevolent exemption under South Dakota codified law, ten dash four dash nine point two. Under, after the review and the previous exemption status, the Director of Equalization is recommending a hundred percent exemption on of the property. It's on lease site, so it's just, it's a building and there's no land attached to it. Just a building on lease site.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Our last application for exemption is the Home Builders Association. It's parcel number two eight one dot twenty seven dot zero five dot zero zero two. Lot two, block five, Garden Village Edition in city of Sioux Falls. They are exempt under the benevolent exemption, South Dakota codified law, ten dash four dash nine point two. This is their exemption number. They are requesting an exemption of five point three percent. This is very similar to the exemption that they submitted last year for the twenty twenty one assessment year. Based on all of the documents that they submit, the assessor's office is recommending for this property to be five point three percent exempt on the land and five point three percent exempt on the structures.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Got a motion to approve with a second. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
There is one more application for exemption that we, I put off today because it's under an appeal. So we'll, we can do that exemption after the board's decision on the appeal.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda is a series of parcel properties that have I am requesting for the board to deny their appeal based on a couple different reasons. Carter, can you pull that up on the what, what the commission docket is? In the commission packet, there are six properties that missed the deadline. They either filed it to the wrong person or after the legal appeal date. They are listed right here. So the first two did not submit their appeal to the local Board of Equalization, which is, would have been the city of Sioux Falls. The three through six did not submit their appeal to the proper authority, and they missed the deadline. Under South Dakota codified law, ten dash eleven dash twenty seven, no complaint concerning property assessed in any district. Having a local Board of Equalization shall be considered unless it is first made to such local board, except a non-resident owner or a non-resident taxpayer of the taxing district may be heard without such original complaint. These folks did not go to their local board. I do have a copy of the assessment notice that clearly states that you must first go to your local Board of Equalization. If people are filing an appeal through the Lincoln County Appeals website process, the first thing, once they get into an appeal, it states, please make sure that you are filing the application for the city or township that the parcel is located. I mean, there's their second indication. And any time that anybody calls and wants to hand us an application for an appeal, we say, we're not those folks. You need to submit it to your local Board of Equalization. They can't hand it to me. They have to hand it to the property, proper authority. And these folks that are listed did not meet those requirements.
So maybe this is being hyper-technical, but it says, no complaint shall be considered. I mean, the word is, that we're not even gonna consider it because it didn't meet those deadlines. And the word is that we're not even going to consider it because it didn't meet those deadlines. So do you actually need anything from us?
Is it the Department of Revenue?
Yep. I I I did contact the Department of Revenue for some guidance on these, and they recommendate recommended that a formal denial by the County Board of Equalization was the recommendation.
Did you need them individually?
No.
Okay. So I've heard the request on these parcels. Is there a motion?
So the action would be to approve the denial by the department or equalization for these on the reasons that were stated. I would so offer that motion.
I'll second it, Madam Chair.
So I have a motion to approve the denials on these six properties. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Is that the last thing for today?
That is the last item on our agenda.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to recess as County Board of Equalization?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Then I would like a motion to reconvene as County Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Thank you, yes. We are on item 16 of our agenda. We have a CICAG revised joint cooperative agreement.
15.
Oh, we got the tabled item. Why did I want to skip that? All right. Who's presenting on that?
Uh, we could cut to the chase. I have a recommendation to go with American Engineering Testing for the purposes of the airport projects.
I second that.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any questions or further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
I will move on to item 16.
Okay, so CICAG sent the requested resolution and agreement. The major change being that they are adding the city of T as a first-class municipality, which would increase the cooperative members from 12 to 13 and reduce the private representatives from eight to seven to oversize over all size of the board would remain at 21. So we have a resolution and an agreement in there to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next item?
Attached the resolution recommended by the bond council to redeem some of the bonds on the courthouse building since they are in a call status. I just need approval of the resolution.
I've heard the request. Is there a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
So my last item is board action regarding the land south of the highway shop. We do request one of three actions. Authorized to advertise to sell the land by bid, authorize an RFP for realtors to sell the property or continue to lease the property as a use.
Which would require us to advertise it?
Yes. And I have talked to the person that was previously writing it, and he's fine with waiting for the advertisement to come out.
Madam Chair, I did have someone reach out to me and wanted to know what we were doing with the property currently this growing season. That person was interested in farming that parcel of land if if that's what we decided to do. I realize that.
Madam Chair, I'll offer a motion to re-advertise it for lease for one year and put a hold on until other decisions have been made concerning the courthouse responsibilities until that has been determined. So that's my motion.
I'll second that motion.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, we call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Just for clarification, Chair, how soon could we have it advertised and be asking for?
I'm thinking no later than the second week, second Tuesday in May.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, last item on our agenda. We have a public input work session regarding a CO2 pipeline crossing Lincoln County.
And Madam Chair, with that, I'm going to have to step down.
Okay. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schmidt, you're going to tee that off or?
Thank you, Commissioner Landine. We have, I think it was last week, we applied for a party of understanding till we could register our concerns, whatever, about the CO2 pipeline that is crossing our county, which was approved. And now we're going to have an ability for those individuals that have concerns or supports or whatever to air their particular points of view for information that the county can take under advisement on what action we would decide to take in the future. There will be no proper form or action taken today, but we want to give you ample time to register your your concerns about this pipeline. And so it is your time. And I think we've allotted about 30 minutes, Madam Chair, for this. And the five-minute rule will probably be into effect, so you've got the lights up front. So whoever wants to appear first certainly can, so this is your time.
I'm Carol Hoines. I'm a landowner here in Dayton Township, and the proposed pipeline was running directly across the 8 acres of my quarter of land there. We've been attending the meetings for the PUC. I've written to the PUC. This pipeline is very hazardous, is dangerous. I think you were sent a video. I hope you've had a chance to preview that of what happens if there were a potential break in the pipeline. If not, somebody might be able to pull that up for you. I wrote each of you a letter. I hope you had some previous acknowledgement of that. I also wrote to Governor Noem, and I wrote to the Department of Agriculture. And just to be very brief on this, I thank you for declaring status because that will help us in our fight. I hope you will review that video again, which was an 8-inch pipeline that was going through a test spot. They opened a valve and let the carbon dioxide escape, and it seeps all over. What you see is a white cloud of vapor. The carbon dioxide actually stays on the ground and spreads out further. As far as they want to put a 20-inch pipeline through our property, which is much larger, and we would like your help in writing to the PUC, if you would, and voicing some opinions, and maybe perhaps putting in some ordinances for Lincoln County landowners so that we have some things in place. And I am going to write again to the PUC. I received this back from Brian Walsh, who is the State Department of Agriculture, and he says, we always get conflicting information on this. The PUC has the permitting authority lies with the PUC Commission for this pipeline. If the project will comply with all applicable rules and laws, we will not these are the rules and laws, that it will not pose a serious threat or injury to the environment or social economic conditions in the project area, and that it will not substantially impair the health, safety, welfare of the people near the pipeline and unduly interfere with the orderly development of the region. I feel that last statement was very important because this is hazardous. I talked to a person from the pipeline representing their company from Dallas, Texas, or down in the Texas area. Well, he says, why are you opposed to this? It runs right through my property. It goes all the way through. I said, do you raise corn and beans down there? No. I said, so he says, I'm a rancher. I says, so you have cactus and sagebrush, and you have a pipe going through. You don't have a farmer going back and forth and back and forth across that pipeline. If we have a wet year and a combine sinks down, they only want to put it in four foot deep. It'll break that pipeline. Frost heaves will break the pipeline. So I don't think it should be allowed to go through South Dakota. I expressed that at the meeting. I talked to a land agent and told him I do not want it on my property, and I'll withdraw my time.
Thank you, Carol.
Jason, were you going to show a clip today at all?
I never got a chance to submit it to the auditor. I did share it with Carol. Carol saw it.
All right.
I think you all have it at some point.
Anybody else want to come up and speak? Good morning. State your name and address.
Good morning, Joy Hohn. Thank you for the opportunity to voice our concerns. Last Friday, Summit changed their route to one of their alternatives with the PUC on the same date as the party status deadline. We believe that there are many landowners that are unaware that this pipeline could be crossing their land and or going close to their homes. Since the party status deadline was last Friday, how can these unsuspecting landowners be involved in the PUC process with all the reroutes that Summit is continually making? After being a landowner where the Dakota Access Pipeline crossed, we know that it takes time to become informed, process its information, and if desired, become an intervenor. There is still so much confusion on where the proposed route will be in Lincoln County and in other counties throughout our state. Unlike other pipelines, this pipeline is getting people's attention. If you look on the PUC website and look under party status applications, you will see that 373 have been filed, and they generally, for a docket, receive the most 100, is what I was told. This is why the counties that I should say the people that have filed are these applications are counties, cities, townships, first responder departments, water systems, gas and utility, gas utilities, electric utilities, besides landowners and other concerned citizens. We really need your help. You need to be, we need your help to be the voice for these unsuspecting landowners and to be the voice for concerned citizens and landowners. In the future, we would like to ask the county to send a letter to the PUC stating the concerns of the citizens, landowners of Lincoln County, and after hearing and researching this pipeline, formally opposing this unnecessary and very hazardous pipeline. This pipeline could pose the threat of serious injury and could substantially impair the health, safety and welfare of many citizens of South Dakota. In addition, we would like to request the county to place a moratorium in order to study appropriate ordinances for Lincoln County such as setbacks and depth requirements. Summit does not need another profit-making scheme that is risking our lives and our land. It's ridiculous to even consider this potentially deadly pipeline. Don't our lives and our land matter? That's why we are asking you commissioners to please protect us.
Thank you.
Morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. My name is Dale Bonnema. I am associated with Bonnema Harvest Farms, which we have the letter that they were associating with us. I do have that video on my phone. I don't know how good you could see it. I would love to show it to you if that's okay, if I can find it here and and bring it up. It is dangerous. This cloud you are seeing is 196 feet tall. This is from an 8-inch pipeline, simulating the rupture, and that is frozen water vapor. That's not the natural gas that you see. It is odorless. It is colorless. You cannot see it. Wait for it, and the dry ice explodes. And when that happens, this goes to a quarter mile wide. And this is from an 8-inch pipeline. I'm trying to bring out just how dangerous this pipeline really is. CO2 is odorless, colorless, and heavier than air. It stays in pockets, and it can be, what do you want to call it? Drift or blowing with the wind. So you may have an accident happen, and you may have to evacuate the whole town of Canton in a pipeline that's this big. According to what I've been told, the valves are approximately 32 miles apart in a 20-inch pipeline under 2,100 pounds of pressure. This is dangerous. This is not considered a hazard. This is a hazardous liquid pipeline, and there are no parameters for this by our government whatsoever. Right now, the parameters are for a hydrogen pipeline, not a CO2 pipeline. And I have another paper here that if you I think some of this may have been sent to you. It is written by this pipeline safety sorry thing. And he goes on to say how dangerous this is and how it can explode. If you read it, this is actually page 8, 9 at the bottom. I will read it to you here. This area potentially impacts the rupture of an oil and gas line pipeline as well as define current February regulations, which estimate how far liquid hydrogen carbon will spread with a blast radius resulting from natural gas pipeline ruptures. The danger zone for human life in the hazardous hydrocarbon liquid and natural gas line is measured in feet. Abate thousands of feet for a larger pipeline. Then, on the next page, he states, in contrast, your CO2 pipeline impact area may be measured in miles, not feet. This is likely because the CO2 rupture can release millions of tons of CO2. The compressed CO2 will expand into a gas upon the pipeline rupture and fill large volumes that it did not take inside the pipe. The CO2 may disperse quickly because it is not or may not disperse quickly. Sorry, heavier than air, meaning that it will flow towards and settle in low-lying areas, including ravines, valleys and basements. And you, as a person outside, may walk out of your house and not even know it's there. It's odorless. It's colorless. If it's between 5 and 8%, you will become nauseated, have headaches, could throw up and be pass out. If it's over 8%, you will actually be euthanized. You will be dead.
Thank you, Dale.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to come up?
One of the comment I had, I wish you commissioners would put at least a 1,500-foot setback on this because of how dangerous it is.
Good morning, Carla.
Carla Lems, 47980, 281st Street, Canton. I'm just here to express just personally my concern with this pipeline as well as I've just heard from so many other landowners and just people in general that are also concerned about it. I have so many, but I'll just list four today, four concerns that I have. And our background is we have worked with pipelines in the past, most recently Dakota Access and Northern Natural Gas. It's not necessarily a fun process, but it was something that we saw that we needed as a needed commodity for our for our community, our state. My number one concern with this is the safety issue, as well as other people have also said. You know, this is a very dangerous gas. If there were to be a break in the line, would we have the emergency services that would be needed? And, you know, like is mentioned before too, the CO2 displaces oxygen. My number two concern is the land values that, you know, you have a pipeline like that that goes through. I mean, we're talking about, you know, not only the land that is going through, but adjacent land. And like he said, I mean, I think a setback of at least 1,500 feet would be at least what we would need. Also, number three, the liability to the landowners. There's been concern that you would not be able to get insurance for something like this as a landowner. And my last concern is the eminent domain. We have a private company right here that We have a private company right here that would profit from land that could possibly be taken by eminent domain. I see this as a dangerous precedent being set for a private company to be able to come in and get eminent domain. Our founders understood that private property is the foundation of our freedoms, and I think we need to protect that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to come up?
Hello. My name is Linda Nichols. First, I want to thank you for allowing this, for the public to be heard on this hazardous pipeline. As others have pointed out, significant concerns in the, and in the comment section of the PUC docket, there's over 80 comments, and party applications, party status applications, there's over 350. I share all those concerns as well. The hazardous pipeline will permanently affect land values, substantially impair farming yields, pose a threat of serious injury to large amount, because of the large amount of CO pressure, of high-pressure CO2, the use of eminent domain for a private, for-profit company, the undue interference of cities' growth, and the potential environmental impact of decades to centuries of storing millions of metric-tonne of CO2 underground. Does South Dakota need to be a CO2 hazardous pipeline? Research says no. There's a high level of research being done now called the new carbon technology economy. Some are environmentally motivated, some are economically motivated. Either way, it's a very popular area of research. Carbon is now recognized as something too valuable to waste, and that was from David Baumstein, an article saying, changing what is possible for the new carbon economy. Much of the research that is aimed at converting CO2 into other chemicals or minimizing or eliminating it from the fermentation process. The objective is to close the carbon cycle and not waste it. The research is being promoted and supported by the Department of Energy and is being carried out at very technical, capable organizations such as MIT, NREL, Stanford, as well as many private companies. There is an enormous amount of pure CO2 available. One thing unique about ethanol biorefinery is the amount of purity of the CO2, of the CO2 product from the fermentation process. According to the Summit application, 12 million tons annually. If carbon is becoming too costly to waste, why would we take 12 million metric-tonnes per year of pure CO2 and inject it into the ground? Can't something better be done with it? The National Renewable Energy Laboratory, published in February of 2022, see, the title was "Beyond Fossil Carbon: Green Electricity is Opening Doors to Low-Emission Alternatives for Making Fuels and Chemicals." In the article, Joshua Swendell, laboratory manager, states, "The advancements we're seeing, the activity we are seeing, we have commercial offerings, and we will have commercial offerings in the next five to 10 years. I think there is opportunities to get down to cost competitiveness, especially as you start to consider any low-carbon credits that come along. This research suggests that there's a good chance that technology of carbon capture, liquefaction, pipeline transport, and burying underground will be obsolete in the not-too-distant future. Why would we let South Dakota be a hazardous CO2 pipeline highway when the biorefinery could capture and convert carbon at their site into products that they could turn around and sell?" In closing, I would like to request that you, the commissioners of Lincoln County, do three things. Pass a moratorium regarding hazardous carbon pipelines. Pass ordinance and setbacks and minimum depth requirements on the hazardous pipelines. Write a letter of opposition to be filed on the PUC docket, HP22-001. Please consider these above requests to protect the citizens and land against this very hazardous and unnecessary CO2 pipeline. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to come up?
Hello, Commissioners. Chase Jensen. I am an organizer with Dakota Rural Action that's been working with landowners up and down the route since last November related to this pipeline. Have a few concise comments here from the thousands of people that I've been communicating with and contact with throughout the route. Landowners, local officials. Want to name that 14 of the 18 counties crossed did apply for intervention. The call that the PUC made in their public hearings that they would take seriously, the opinion of local elected officials, clearly was heard. And, as noted, there's a huge amount of people who filed, around 370, for party status.
Jase, which four counties did not apply? If you know.
Minnehaha, Solie, Cottington, and the last, I can't recall off the top of my head. The four key concerns that I've heard come up from the hundreds of landowners I've been at meetings with talking about this issue is first, the safety. I think that's been adequately named. This is a potentially lethal situation. And of course, no one is running around saying it's going to fail at every juncture, but the risk of rupture is real, and even if the risk is low in frequency, the detrimental effect that that rupture would have is significant and needs to be taken into account. Connected to that is the need for first responders to be trained in the event that you have millions or metric-tonnes of carbon being released. It's heavier than oxygen, displacing oxygen. First responders would need full set of, you know, contained oxygen equipment. Even combustible engines will not run. They saw that in a rupture down in Mississippi. Vehicles were stalling out. So, there's serious concerns about the logistics of handling a rupture, and if a company wants to come and do business, it, they should have to pay the full public safety costs in order to do that. The lack of transparency from the company has been named. There's confusion on who is being crossed, and so a lot of people didn't get an application for party status. They didn't know if they were on the route or not. And of course, the concern of eminent domain in the state, if a company gets permitted as a, as a common carrier, they assume the right to eminent domain. So, landowners' requests for y'all to be involved is because they have no other recourse legally. They can't stop this project from receiving eminent domain unless the local officials speak out. So, the actions that have been requested, intervention, thank you for doing that, passing a moratorium, or setting aside a time to research zoning ordinances. There have already been counties that have done that, a handful of them. Some counties, Brown County, already passed a 1,500-foot setback and a six-foot depth requirement. So, you wouldn't be the first. There's already research. There's ongoing conversations that the county commissioners can have with each other. And then, the last thing really is intervening, putting in ordinances is significant to lay the groundwork. But in order to protect landowners from a private company being able to seize their land so that they can make profit while they socialize the risk, as someone put it, in order to stop that, we need counties and local officials to say, we do not want this project. And I think that that's the action that the commissioners at the PUC will take most seriously. If they see that every county along the route says, we don't want this for our citizens, we're representing their wishes, I think that they would really have to take that into account. So, that would be a really bold action that I think would be one of the strongest things you could do to protect landowners with eminent domain laws as loose as they are right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come up? I'm going to, I'm going to ask this. Is there anybody else here that plans on speaking? Okay, I've got two more. So, if we stick, try to stick to our half-hour rule.
Mine should take about two minutes.
Go.
All right. I'm Linda Montgomery. I'm from Fairview, South Dakota. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I didn't know that this was on the agenda until today. I have a background as an Army reservist. I taught NBC, which is nuclear, chemical, biological warfare, and I'm also in the medical perfection, profession, a retired nurse practitioner. And I read an article about how safe these pipelines are, and it took me two minutes, well, actually, my husband, it took him two minutes to find two articles of what happened in Mississippi. They had a leak. No one knew. The population didn't know what was going on. People started dropping. They couldn't breathe. They couldn't see. They couldn't hear. And they had to, and the hospitals, first responders didn't know what they were dealing with. The hospitals didn't know what they were dealing with. It took a while to, you know, to know what was going on. Now, the, the responsibility I put us on the pipeline, that was one of the first things they should have done, was what happens if it leaks, and gave training. These people, you know, when I wrote something about that, the big thing was, no one died. Guess what? When you have carbon dioxide poisoning, or you are in a prolonged environment of high carbon dioxide, there is, no one can tell you that this will be fine when you get out and it's gone, and this can last. Things like Parkinson's, things like confusion, people with COPD already, or people who didn't have COPD before this. I beg you to look at this and do what they say. Please write a letter. We don't need this in Lincoln County. We do not need this in South Dakota. It's a very easy online search to what happened in the areas where there was leakage or where there was rupture. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nick Abis, 46905, 281st Street. I'll just hit one point real quick so we can get out of here. For our county specific, I don't know what the newest proposed pipeline route is, but where it has been going is basically past Canton, Harrisburg, T., Lenox, and not far south of Sioux Falls. And constantly, we're talking about, we're one of the largest counties and one of the fastest-growing counties in the nation, and putting in a pipeline like this would have a major negative impact to growth. And, I mean, it just devalues the land, everything directly around it is less desirable. So, especially if we're looking at the northern part of our county, I just wonder how it would negatively affect, affect any growth moving forward. So, I think that would be something else to consider among all the other good points brought up. So, all right, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Nick.
Scott Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. I sent all you guys a couple of articles a couple of weeks ago. I would ask that you look at those very closely. The movie, The Rupture, not so much as the engineering outfit. Read that article. Read what they're talking about there. Another thing, I think we've all been led to believe we need to capture carbon. Research it. A volcano puts out more carbon than mankind ever has or ever will. We don't need to capture carbon. We don't need this pipeline. We've all been led to believe that we need to feel guilty for polluting the earth. It's not so. Mother Nature puts more carbon into the atmosphere than man ever will. Thanks.
Good morning.
Good morning. Jason Bannon Top, 277-4541, 1st Avenue, Canton. There's really not much I, more I can say than everyone else has shared with you. I will say this. We've all listened to the safety concerns, and I, I feel that is number one. We have a huge, growing county, and, and I think we need to protect that. We need to protect our citizens of the state. Public enterprise is, if this was for the betterment of the country, I could maybe get along with it, like Dakota Access. We didn't have a great experience with them either, but it's oil, right? We need oil. This isn't, in my opinion, not necessary. If, if man's decided that we need carbon in the ground, I, I don't necessarily agree with that. If, if it was supposed to be there, God would have intended it, put it there himself. I just think it's dangerous. With that, thank you guys for doing party status, listening to us today, and certainly appreciate you guys with the consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to say something new, Dale?
Well, I would just say that six feet deep is, should be a minimum, because at four feet deep, they're going to hit every rural water line in your county.
Understood.
How many pipelines that people don't even know about. I know Sioux County in Iowa, and I think on with a nine-foot minimum.
All right. Thank you. Sir?
I'm Rodney Miles, 27534, 70th Avenue, Lenox. I've got the same concerns as everyone else here has, mainly the safety and the six-foot depth instead of four-foot, the use of eminent domain by a private, for-profit company. I'm also concerned about the land values because in certain studies, you'll read up and basically see that with a hazardous pipeline, devaluation of property can be anyplace from 5% to 40%. And that's basically talking about a natural gas pipeline or oil pipeline. This is much more severe and dangerous than any of those. Basically, I'm concerned about the route that they're choosing in Orland County up here, and, you know, with all the widening of Interstate 29, all the construction that's going on, you know, around that area, that, that's a disaster waiting to happen, I think, if this pipeline's in before all that is finished. We need you guys' help to, you know, pass some ordinances. I think, like with the wind towers, 16-foot, 1,600-foot setback, something, you know, to protect the landowners because these ethanol companies have all kinds of options, do exactly the same thing that they want to accomplish by this pipeline, but only add less profit to them. And I'm going to read you one statement. It's by Bill Lowry, Emergency Management Agency Director for the Southwest Region of Pipelines and Hazard Materials Safety Administration. He was asked on camera, on record, would he build a house near a pipeline? And his response was, here's what I did when I bought my home. I looked on all the maps. I looked through all the dry holes and pipelines. When I found there was nothing but dry holes and pipelines in the area, I went ahead and built my house there. It's not that I'm afraid of pipelines. It's not because I think something will happen, but it's because something could happen. And that's just the reality of it, and we're always better with choices. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I think we've come full circle. Is there anyone that would like to add anything? All right. Well, thanks, everybody, for coming out and sharing your thoughts with us.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Now, it's my understanding that we need to have an executive session. Is that correct, Bill? So, I'd ask for a motion to go into executive session.
Madam Chair, I would so move for an executive session.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Under what category?
Yep.
South Dakota.
We are going to go into executive session under SDCL 1252, sub 1. Yeah, I think that's all we need.
And the motion was by Schmidt?
Yes.
I had the...
I'll second it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes.
I'll